Thanks, everybody, for being here. My name is Travis Stripes. I am the Chair of the Michigan Public Service Commission. And we're holding this town hall meeting to talk about the outages that many folks across Michigan, more than a million people across Michigan, experienced in the last month. And particularly here in southeast Michigan, where we had two separate events. One, a major ice storm on February 22nd, and then a heavy snowstorm just a week later, on March 3rd, that both of which resulted in significant power outages, and particularly problematic, very long power outages. A number of folks were without power for even a week or more. Some had barely gotten reconnected from the February 22nd storm, or they were out again in early March. And really, we don't have a whole lot of preliminary remarks. We are here to hear from you. We have found that listening to the people most directly impacted by outages is often the best way to understand what those outages mean, how they impact you, whether it's as an individual, as a family, as a business. And often, the ideas of what can be done based on what you're seeing in your communities and your neighborhoods helps to inform the strategies that we use as regulators of public utilities here in the state of Michigan to try and get the grid to a place that customers expect and indeed deserve. The other part of this is, I think the outages of the last month really brought this to bear, but of course, they're not the only recent examples. But we have had four outages in the last four years that affected more than 500,000 customers statewide. We had, in 2021, a historic summer where in the DTE territory, there were major outage events happening, on average, more frequently than once every five days. In 2017, the worst windstorm we could have. And then, of course, last month, the worst ice storm in 50 years. But I think the challenge is, if you're having historic events every other year, they're no longer really historic. It is the new normal. And we have an obligation, I think, as regulators and certainly the utilities that we oversee, to make sure that the grid is ready for the new normal and where it's going. So that's what we want to hear from you all tonight. I also want to flag that if you have friends, family members, neighbors, others who can't be here tonight, we're doing a virtual town hall meeting tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Information on that and how to dial in is available on our website at michigan.com/mbsc. So with that, I want to introduce my two colleagues, Commissioner Tremaine Phillips and Commissioner Catherine Perittig. Let them offer a couple opening remarks as well, and then we'll get started.
Thank you, Chair Stripes, and good evening, everyone. My name is Tremaine Phillips. Again, my comments will be brief, as we want to maximize opportunity for all of you to share your stories with us. First, I just want to take a quick minute to thank all of our mini-staff who are here to support us. Thank you for your flexibility and your responsiveness in coordinating not one but three town halls within a span of two days in response to the recent severe storms and subsequent power outages. Secondly, I would like to thank all of you, all of you for taking time out of your day to communicate with us, your challenges. I know that many frustrations and the solutions in the aftermath of the recent extreme weather. But I also know and realize that you all don't want to be here, that we recognize you have better places to be this evening, better things to do with your time than coming here and having to voice your frustrations in person to us. Yes, our grid and by extension, our jobs as regulators has become more challenging to manage. We are confronting the headwinds of aging energy infrastructure, uncertain economic and geopolitical times, and the real and unabating impacts of an abruptly changing climate. But we do not have the luxury of waiting or attempting to tackle any one of these problems in isolation. And though I can assure you that this commission and our staff has and continues to have an unwavering focus on grid reliability, on grid resilience, and safety, we also know that you demand and you deserve better. And therefore, we, regulators, utilities, and legislators, must do more, and we must do it faster. So I thank you all again for your commitment to join us here today. We are deeply sorry for the financial, as well as the personal losses experienced over the last several weeks, but we look forward to hearing your comments and personal stories with us this evening. Thank you.
My name is Catherine Perittig. I'm the third of the three commissioners. And I also just wanted to start by thanking all of you for taking the time out of your day today to attend and to share your experiences with the recent outages following the ice storm. I do want to note that if anybody has any questions or if you need any help, there are members of our customer assistance team that are here and ready to assist you at the desk outside in the hall. They can help with information on bill assistance, or help with filing formal complaints, or with answering any other questions that you might have. Just talk to anybody with an MPSC name tag on, and they can point you to the right person. When the power goes out, people lose. They lose the ability to stay warm in the winter or cool in the summer. They can lose food in their fridge or freezer. They lose medicine. Some people even lost pets or farm animals and have had severe health impacts as a result of the power outages. None of that is okay. And we're working diligently to make sure that we identify the root of the problems that are facing our electric grid and then finding the right solution. Just like the other two commissioners said, I don't want to spend too much time right now talking about what we are doing, because the purpose of this town hall meeting is to hear from you, but I will mention just three things that we're actively working on to help make improvements, so you can know what we're working on already, and then help give us more ideas, better ideas, and hold us accountable. The first is that we're rewriting the service quality rules, which will tighten the acceptable service restoration times, and also increase penalties and payments to customers when the power goes out to $35 per day, which is an automatic credit once the threshold is met. That's up from $25 total, which is the current standard. And we expect these service quality rule changes to go into effect this coming Friday, in just a couple of days. The second one is that we're increasing transparency in the performance of our utilities by requiring monthly reporting on outages and fixes, to try to fix these outages. And we're requiring that reporting by census tract, so we can really narrow in on where these problems are occurring. All of this information is going to be posted publicly to our website, the MPSC's website. And this website goes live this Friday. The first data is not due till May 15th, but that will report on the first January, February, and March data for this year, so you'll be able to actually see that posted publicly on our website. And then the third and final thing is that, for the first time ever in the state of Michigan, we're performing an audit on both DTE and Consumers Energy's electric systems. So we can identify for ourselves where these outages come from. We're hiring a third-party independent contractor to do the audit, and that request for proposals for that third-party independent contractor went live last Monday. So if anyone in here knows a firm that you think would do a good job at the audit, please let them notice and submit a proposal. And all of that information is available on the state of Michigan website. So I want to leave it there. I want to stop talking and give the floor to all of you who came in here today.
So we're going to dive right in at this point, and this is the agenda for the rest of this meeting, so it's here for you. So if you would like to make a public comment at the meeting today, you can get a blue comment card that looks like this from the welcome table, complete it, and provide it to Leslie or Wendy, who are over there by the door, and they will bring it to us. I'll call both the next speaker and the person who's on deck, so that they can get ready. And when you call your name, you can go to the mic that's here in the front and make your comment. And this really is designed to, we could hear from you. We have a large number of comments to get through over the next two and a half hours. We have approximately 15 folks who have filled out a comment card so far. So in order to hear from as many people as we possibly can, we're going to limit comments to one per person and three minutes each. Shana is keeping time, over to my left. She'll show you a yellow folder when you've got 30 seconds remaining, and a red folder when your time is up. We do ask that folks adhere to the time limits. We do want to hear from as many people as we possibly can. And then if you are interested in providing comments, but either don't want to speak at an open meeting or have more to say, then you can fit into three minutes. You can also submit white written comments, or comments on white comment cards that are up front. They can be filled out while you're sitting here and then given back to staff. And we can also, of course, receive comments either by email or by regular mail. And the information on how to submit those is at the front table as well. So we're going to get started now. The first person is Fay Benjamin. So Fay, if you want to make your way up to the mic, and then...
Actually, I'm an applaudist for Fay, and she's discussing traffic with someone, so I'll be reading on her, and that, and her words. "Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Fay Benjamin. I have lived in the city of Dearborn for four, over 40 years. I have many experiences with DTE Energy, including having my power shut off by a storm, waiting for days for the power to turn on, like many of you. I've also known DTE as a community partner that I have worked with for over 20 years. DTE is a major supporter of the Air American Plus International Festival, and warrants its sponsorship, which allows us to bring the Air American experience to over 300,000 individuals at each festival. DTE is a contribution to a multi-dimensional organization that has directly significantly impacted the un-served in our community. DTE has been a trusted partner whom I have firsthand experiences in dealing with, them and a range of issues, including blackouts. I know that DTE is trying and may have been prepared for the first and second storm that took place recently. I have been a DTE customer all my life, and are they perfect? No. Can they improve? Yes. Are they trying? Definitely yes. Are they upgrading their infrastructure? Yes. Yet it does not happen overnight. Just like you cannot judge a book by a cover, you cannot condemn DTE by one event."
Over 50 years, I'm the president of the Church Association of Black Organizations, have run No First Activity Center for 20 years. And I don't think when things go wrong, that someone has helped you out, that is, you know, brought food to the center to feed people, to provide expensive LED light bulbs, to bring pallets of work on unbelievably hot days, to provide things that the community needs. And once they get in a bind, unbelievable new normal type of situation, environmental environment, then we run away from them and then stick a knife in them. I think we can make things better. We've discussed with them about their plans. If those of you who look out in the alley, you can see there's a tremendous amount of tree cutting that's going on now, tree trimming. And quite frankly, if that tree trimming had not went on, what we went through the last month would have been worse. There's been a lot of work already done to try to get rid of it, with the grid focusing on underground. There are some things that are going on right now that I think we need to work together as opposed to fighting each other. But DTE has been there in the community for times when there were not bad storms, times when the weather was absolutely fabulous outside, but people were hurting and hungry and needed help, and they were there for us. So I'm not a fair weather friend. I'm not going to run away from you when you're in trouble. Thank you.
I'm here, and thank you, commissioners, for holding this hearing. In southeast Michigan, there are a lot of people that want to have their voices heard. Dearborn used to be my hometown. Now it's not, but I represent a lot of areas that have been impacted by these unfortunately repeated outages. I'm here because I think you should hear what I heard from my constituents. I heard that number of people that were without power, that lost food, that had medical crises, was significant. The people that have oxygen, many who got into acute medical situations, one who reported to have died. The farmer that had 150 sheep, that had no running water, no power, and I thought was suicidal by Sunday. The president of the paralyzed veterans who lives on the second floor of his condo, who couldn't get down because he needed the power lift, and he called the police and the fire, that they wanted to be there, but they were so busy, they couldn't get there for several days. The fire chiefs who called me, the people who had downed power lines, who called and couldn't get anyone to answer, they called the fire departments, and the fire chiefs couldn't get through to DTE that first night. People were scared, and there was real danger. This is an ongoing and real problem. We have to, I was a caseworker, and so were many other people. We need to start to build our resiliency. It's getting worse, not better. We have a partnership at the federal, the state, the local level, but the Michigan Public Service Commission has really got to be critical to this. Global climate is real. We need to strengthen our power grid. I don't ever want to hear the kinds of calls where people were in life-threatening situations again. People who had no place to go because they didn't have a family member, or they didn't have a hotel, a motel that they could get into, let alone afford. It's going to get worse. I have a job to do at the federal level. I need to understand what all the utilities need to build up their resiliency. The members of Congress, four of us, wrote a letter to DTE asking for questions. Why did this happen? What do you need? What else do we need to provide? This is a crisis, one that all of us have a responsibility for. But I am worried for those that I represent, and know, we must do something to build the resiliency of our power grid. Status quo is not okay. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Diane McLean. I'm 72 years old, and I have a kitty cat that's 17. I stayed at my house as long as I could. My power was up for five days, and I was freezing. All the places were taken, you know, the hotels, motels. I couldn't find a place. They jacked up their prices also. I was lucky enough to have my sister and her husband ask me to come and see them in Warren, so after three days, I went over there. I'm on a fixed income. I'm retired, and I lost a lot of food in the refrigerator. And I did call DTE today, and they said they would give me a $35 credit within 90 days. And that's a long time. I'm a little bit behind in some of my bills, but I do keep them up. It's been a struggle, and thank you very much.
My name is Terrell Wilkum, and I'm here on behalf of my neighbors. I live in a neighborhood in Detroit, kind of close to the Eastern Market. And I'm just going to list the days that we have not had power. It's a partial list of the days that we have not had power. And starting from May 2022, there were probably six outages prior to when I started talking. So May 21st, 2022, August 16th and 17th, 2022, August 31st, September 1st, 2022, September 3rd, 2022, January 12th, 2022, January 30th through February 1st, we experienced half-power in our house. We lost power for 48 hours during the last storm. That storm set up DTE's wire fault and hid the wire that goes to our house. It blew out light bulbs, my refrigerator, anything that was plugged in, TVs, radios, stuff of that nature. And we also lost power today. I came here and I did not have power. My partner called and said the power is restored. We've been without power since about 10:30 this morning. There was no storm today. For 90% of the outages that my neighborhood has suffered, there was no storm. It was a nice day. The sun was shining, gentle breeze. I'm asking you to reject the rate hike. We can't choose another electric company to get our services from. We don't have that choice. If our electric company is letting us down and not investing in infrastructure, we can't move to another electric company as individuals. We don't have that choice. A billion-dollar profits over the last year, if I'm not mistaken. And yet, 1.9 billion dollars in profits, and my neighborhood experiences outages on a monthly basis and has for a year. So please, reject the rate increase.
Wendy Jackson, and then Shannon Erwin.
Good evening, everyone. I represent Redford Township, but I also represent everybody in this room who is a customer of DTE. My request is for you guys, who represent us, to hold DTE accountable. When they submit for a rate increase, the one that they have on the table now should be rejected, but any and all requests for rate increases should have a substantial investment in infrastructure. They know that lines above ground are much more susceptible to power outage than if they took the investment to make those lines go underground. They should not be allowed to have profit when they have not made the necessary investments in their infrastructure to keep power out. Storms are only unprecedented at once. After that, they should be anticipated, and there should be action taken that they need to do to prevent future outages. And my request is of you guys, the Michigan Public Service Commission, you've had several meetings over the last couple of days. I'd like for you to report back to us what action items you intend to take as a result of listening to these people speak.
Shannon Erwin, and then Tom Mari.
Hello. My name is Shannon Erwin. I am an unwilling customer of DTE. More than 700,000 homes without power, some of which without power for one or two weeks. That is a failure in capitalism. DTE, for all purposes, is a monopoly. Their services, as we are all well aware, are far below the national average and far below the states around us that are affected by these same storms. The American Society of Civil Engineers gave DTE a C- for aging infrastructure and lack of investment into preserving function. And their cost is the 11th highest in our nation, as is. With the newly requested hype of $622 million, the largest request in Michigan's history, it is simply placing the cost of maintenance on the customer, and I reject that. Businesses are expected to reinvest profits to remain relevant, competitive, effective, and efficient. Instead, DTE uses profits to pay off investors, to increase stock value, without providing the customers with reliable services. Through the limitations of the MPSC, we do not have the full picture of where this money goes. We need transparency to unveil the webs of misdirection. We need legislation to grant you that ability, and we need to see where their dark money investments go. During the pandemic, DTE received a federal relief fund of $30 million excess revenue in 2020, and they still shut off vulnerable customers' power. It was at the, I was at the House Energy Committee here in this past week, and the DTE representative was very glued at leaving responses and testimony of nothing, blaming the weather and claiming they had already apologized. You, however, are the only means by which DTE can be held accountable. If this capitalist experiment works, and DTE were the only, or any other service in this society, like a car mechanic, I would go somewhere else. Quite simply, if the business doesn't have the tools or infrastructure to provide the service I need, or is too costly, I would go somewhere else. DTE does not have competition. I get that we don't want multiple grids on top of one another, and I understand that. However, there is an alternative: home solar. And this is a little fun we have coming our way. We should be able to jump at this opportunity. However, DTE has recognized home solar as a threat to their monopoly and has done everything in their power to kill it. They have stood and gone so far as to get involved in elections for candidates to run on home solar caps as one of their issues. My other issue is with this joke of a $35 payback. It needs to be at least $150, so that DTE will feel that pain when the power does go out. If they're incenting the money, cost and money. I need to see that very well. Reject this rate hike and raise your ability to hold them accountable. Thank you.
Tom Mari, and then Wendy Taylor. An apology if I got that wrong. Mari?
Good evening. I believe we, the citizens, need to understand the true reality in regards to the power outages. Was this outage due to weather that was simply out of control of the utility, or because our infrastructure has not been upgraded and maintained? Do other companies, such as ITC, have any responsibilities here, or are they under the DTE umbrella? It is my understanding that DTE has spent a lot of money on solar and wind. I want to know, does this play a role in offsetting funds that may have been used to maintain and upgrade our infrastructure? It is my hope that this commission work with the utilities to maintain reliable power and not to cater to the special interest or political-driven timeline that would affect our services.
Wendy Taylor, and then William Hickey. William Hickey, and then Luella Prazoudi.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. I'd just like to hold up a voice that came from way in the back, early on, when the storms were mentioned as being unprecedented and an act of God. And that is, they are no act of God. They are an act of humans who are so dependent on fossil fuels. And the person that just spoke a little bit earlier mentioned home solar. My wife and I live in Brightmore in Detroit. We have a small array of solar panels on our house. Do we get any support from DT Energy? Of course not. And last year, as people in this room know, DT Energy requested a surcharge for people who have solar in Michigan, and also, they requested that the money they pay for any ec- for any extra energy we might sell back to them be reduced even below the unreasonable amount it is currently. So instead of incentivizing people to seek and use other forms of energy, they are disincentivizing. But we will not be disincentivized. This is something that we, that we will continue to do, whether DT Energy is going to support us or not. Thank you.
Luella Pizzuti. And then I want to see if either Queen Mack or Wendy Taper are here, and otherwise we'll go to Kurt Fields after.
Falls.
Falls.
Hi there. I'm Luella Pizzuti. I'm not accustomed to doing this kind of stuff. I didn't realize that you weren't aware that this isn't normal for us. My power goes out once or twice a year. I lose, I don't have to worry about eating expired food because I have to throw it all away. I'm not very happy to hear that people on this stage have called this a weather event. It's not because of the weather. It's because of the lack of investment. I'm not always knowing in Michigan. In this last storm, I read Minnesota, where it does a bit of snowing, had eight people without service. Eight people. You, plus you and you, that's it. I don't want to move to Minnesota, so I'm really asking you to deny this. And I'm asking you to enforce what ought to be normal, which is that we get what we pay for.
My name is Hannah Segreino. I live in Grosse Pointe Park, Michigan. And in hearing of these horror stories of people losing power, and I... I can say that I have not lost power. That may have something to do with our socioeconomic privilege. But DTE knows what the problems are. DTE knows how to fix the problems. And DTE has the money and the resources to fix the problems. They just don't want to. Instead, folks, they want to pass costs back on to us by raising our rates while continuing to hoard their obscene profits. And they can, because DTE owns the public utility. And there is nothing we can do about it. All we can do is band together, lift our collective voice, and shout, "That's not fair." And we are shouting "That's not fair" in hopes that someone will listen to us and do the right thing for all of us, not just the folks in Grosse Pointe, Michigan. While DTE holds themselves accountable to their shareholders, someone must hold DTE accountable to their customers. And this is exactly why a company that provides public utilities and owns a monopoly must be right there in this. To have a public utility and hold DTE accountable to providing this shared public utility for everyone reliably and at a fair and a reasonable price. Thank you.
Mike Hashem, and then Andrew Caplois.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mike Hashem. I'm a resident of Dearborn, and I'm a business owner. I'm not here to support DTE, actually. I'm here to throw DTE under the bus. I'm a business owner that always looks for the next solution to save me money. And that next solution was what's getting mainstream now, which is solar energy. I had an engineer come out and assess my facility that I paid for, okay, to assess my rooftop, to see how many solar panels could we possibly put on my rooftop to power my business and to put back into the grid. But guess what I found out, like a few people before me said? DTE kept me from putting excess solar energy on my rooftop to power the residents in my neighborhood. How do you guys like that? You guys came here today, I'm assuming, in gas-generated vehicles. Well, guess what? I just bought a Tesla a couple of weeks ago, and I could even power my own house. But you guys, the government is always advertising we need to go green. We need to go to the next level. How are we going to go to the next level if this body right here that's sitting in front of me is not holding DTE accountable? And trust me, I don't want to smoke screen, you know? I didn't want to come up here and talk today, but I'm hurting. I'm hurting with how much I have to pay for energy. And guess what? I'm in a business district where I got bakeries in my business district, where I have things that it's a necessity for people to live. But I need you guys to understand that people behind me are not here just to waste time. They're here with real issues. But you guys need to actually sit and address the issues, not just put on a show.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much for being here. By the way, thank you, everybody, to the advocates, especially the young people. And being said, let's talk history. Well, I'm a historian, actually. That's my job. A long time ago, in a galaxy far, far away, about 43 years ago, to be precise, I was a young engineering student at Michigan State University. And I took a class called Engineering Careers. It was a one-credit course. And each week, a different corporation came in and talked about engineering opportunities. We saw all different engineers. Detroit Edison came in. A gentleman came in with his slideshow and talked about what a great place it was to work and how important it was. They wanted to hire young engineers to fix the aging grid. 43 years ago! We have now, wait, that was 43 years ago. A lot of people in this room aren't 43 years old. They've lived a lifetime of DTE promises. We have listened to DTE make high-cost promises, as Mary Poppins would say. They promise the world, and they don't deliver. Yes, we're going to fix the grid. It's aging, and we know it. We're going to fix it. Come on, I heard it 23 years ago. It's not fixed. They're not even making an attempt to fix it. We see it time after time. It's the same communities going down. There's an area in Lugolium that's called the Bermuda Triangle. Two summers ago, when we had all the power outages, there were families that lost power 13 times. It's time to hold DTE to the fire. They're promising, "Oh, yes, we'll do this. We'll do this." They're not doing it. They're selling us a story. It's time to actually say, "DTE, you do this or face the consequences."